Wife grew up in New York and she always wants to go back and I go. You didn't melt the ice off your windshield like your father had to. The blow charge to open the door.
Yeah, I've seen stuff like that.
Evening, everybody.
Hi, Craig. Sorry I couldn't call you back. The afternoon slipped away and a doctor's appointment finished it off for me.
That's what happens.
I'm sure the world will keep turning.
I see a face here.
We're missing Chair Jennings who is unlikely to make it.
Oh, really?
Yes, unless there have been new developments.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Well, we're ready to roll. We got a vice chair.
Then I would like to call to order. The planning Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of October 18th, 2021. I will now read my little printed speech. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. Please make sure you visit malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Commissioners, if you have comments to make during this meeting process, please raise your hand and I will call you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. I think next we would have a roll call.
Good evening, commissioners. Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Wild.
Here.
Chair Jennings. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 5A, continue to a date uncertain.
And Chair, if I may, Vice Chair, I'd like to ask too that we remove item 3B2 from the agenda. That's 5555 Bush Drive. It was a DMW we were going to report tonight and I will bring it back at a later date.
Let's continue to a date uncertain, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, I accept that amendment.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay. Patricia, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, we're just sailing along here, aren't we? Next, we have a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 8th, 2021.
Great. Written and oral communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda, but for which Planning Commission has subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Norm Haney.
Norm? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
One second. Excuse me, let me activate the timer.
Thank you, I was just gonna ask. How much time are we allocating here?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, honorable city planning commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you do. It's not easy to carry the burden of being a planning commissioner. And I know you all work very hard to understand projects and then spend a lot of time in this type of the Zoom meeting. My comments tonight are very simple. I think it's time to end the Zoom meeting concept. I know you don't have the authority to do it. However, every planning commissioner respected you, I'm sorry, city council members respected you and that's why you've been appointed. So you have a direct link to the people that do have the ability to change this. I think it's time that we had in-person presentations in the city council chambers. Now, we all know that you can go to a baseball game, football game, a bar, a restaurant, and if you wear your mask, then it's acceptable. I don't know why we can't do the same thing for Planning Commission hearings as well as city council meeting hearings. I think it's time that we made that move. Those are my comments tonight and again, thank you for your time and your effort in being a planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Any other members of the public?
We have no other speakers.
Then let's turn to commission members and staff comments and I'm going to exercise my prerogative and go first. This will be my last meeting as a planning commissioner. I told Councilman Pearson that I'd like to step down and he'll be announcing my replacement shortly. It's been my privilege to serve on this commission and to work with the incredibly dedicated city staff, city attorneys, and my fellow commissioners who are committed to serving this city and give so generously of their time, energy, and expertise. While the meetings and sometimes the whole planning process are definitely longer and often more contentious than they need to be, I know that each commissioner is acting in good faith and trying to do what he believes is right for the city. My decision to step down is based solely on my selfish desire to spend more time on other things, period. I wish you all the best and I commend my fellow commissioners for your continuing service to our community. So thanks and let's carry on. Any other commissioner comments? John?
First, I want to, second, Norm's request for joint meetings, at least joint meetings, if not just meetings in City Hall. I regularly watch the Laguna Beach meetings. They go very smoothly. They have joint meetings. You can come on Zoom or you can come in person. There is a general feeling in the people I talk to that the city is doing a disservice to public comment by not allowing people to come down and talk to each other and see the process live. Now, on October 25th, city council meeting, there's a proposal to go stay on Zoom, so I hope the constituents and the councilmen reconsider that. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we lost one of our older planning commissioners on
Wife grew up in New York and she always wants to go back and I go. You didn't melt the ice off your windshield like your father had to. The blow charge to open the door.
I've seen stuff like that.
Evening, everybody.
Hi, Craig. Sorry I couldn't call you back. The afternoon slipped away and a doctor's appointment finished it off for me.
That's what happens.
I'm sure the world will keep turning.
I see a face here.
We're missing Chair Jennings who is unlikely to make it.
Oh, really?
Yes, unless there have been new developments.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Well, we're ready to roll. We got a vice chair.
Then I would like to call to order. The planning Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of October 18th, 2021. I will now read my little printed speech. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Commissioners, if you have comments to make during this meeting process, please raise your hand and I will call you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. I think next we would have a roll call.
Good evening, commissioners. Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Wild.
Here.
Chair Jennings. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 5A. Continue to a date uncertain.
And Chair, if I may, Vice Chair, I'd like to ask too that we remove item 3B2 from the agenda. That's 5555 Bush Drive. It was a DMW we were going to report tonight and I will bring it back at a later date.
Let's continue to a date uncertain, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, I accept that amendment.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Patricia, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, we're just sailing along here, aren't we? Next, we have a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 8th, 2021.
Great. Written and oral communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda, but for which planning commission has subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Norm Haney.
Norm?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
One second. Excuse me, let me activate the timer.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask. How much time are we allocating here?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, honorable city planning commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you do. It's not easy to carry the burden of being a planning commissioner. And I know you all work very hard to understand projects and then spend a lot of time in this type of the Zoom meeting. My comments tonight are very simple. I think it's time to end the Zoom meeting concept. I know you don't have the authority to do it. However, every planning commissioner respected you, I'm sorry, city council members respected you and that's why you've been appointed. So you have a direct link to the people that do have the ability to change this. I think it's time that we had in-person presentations in the city council chambers. Now, we all know that you can go to a baseball game, football game, a bar, a restaurant, and if you wear your mask, then it's acceptable. I don't know why we can't do the same thing for planning commission hearings as well as city council meeting hearings. I think it's time that we made that move. Those are my comments tonight. And again, thank you for your time and your effort in being a planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Any other members of the public?
We have no other speakers.
Then let's turn to commission members and staff comments and I'm going to exercise my prerogative and go first. This will be my last meeting as a planning commissioner. I told Councilman Pearson that I'd like to step down and he'll be announcing my replacement shortly. It's been my privilege to serve on this commission and to work with the incredibly dedicated city staff, city attorneys and my fellow commissioners who are committed to serving this city and give so generously of their time, energy and expertise. While the meetings and sometimes the whole planning process are definitely longer and often more contentious than they need to be, I know that each commissioner is acting in good faith and trying to do what he believes is right for the city. My decision to step down is based solely on my selfish desire to spend more time on other things, period. I wish you all the best and I commend my fellow commissioners for your continuing service to our community. So thanks and let's carry on. Any other commissioner comments? John?
First, I want to. Second, Norm's request for joint meetings, at least joint meetings, if not just meetings in City Hall. I regularly watch the Laguna Beach meetings. They have, they go very smoothly. They have joint meetings. You can come on Zoom or you can come in person. There is a general feeling in the people I talk to that the city is doing a disservice to public comment by not allowing people to come down and talk to each other and see the process live. Now, on October 25th, city council meeting, there's a proposal to go stay on Zoom. So I hope the constituents and the councilmen reconsider that. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we lost one of our older planning commissioners on Friday. Richard Carrigan died or passed away very suddenly. He was a planning commissioner, I think for eight years, it could have been four, and did a very good job and kept his interest in the city. So I'd like to dedicate this meeting to Richard Carrigan. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Craig?
Yeah, first, thank you, David, for your service and for the discourse we've had on all these things. And I agree on what Norm has presented and I think that there's, we've talked about it in the past, there's room for hybrid forums where, you know, maybe presenters come live in the room, but people can still participate from home. And I think it's probably important to recognize that the planning commission is different from the council in this regard and that we're unlikely to have any meetings with 100 people showing up. I mean, we may have that and if we could probably foresee that coming and make plans to accommodate it and require certain people have to be on Zoom. But most of the meetings are just going to be a small handful of people anyway. So I think, I think, you know, we shouldn't necessarily feel like whatever council does is what we have to do, but maybe we're a different animal. So speaking of animals, what is the status of the rodenticide LCP that I think we sent it up to coastal in May and we're supposed to be getting something back on that and getting an ordinance and where are we on that, Richard?
Certainly. The city, the coastal commission, I'm probably going to be off till, I want to say, I think at their July meeting, perhaps it was August. They voted to finally to adopt the LCPA. It was then forwarded to our city council. Our council accepted the changes that the coastal commission made. I want to say that was beginning of August and then we sent it back up to the coastal commission for their final certification since we accepted it as proposed. And at their September meeting, the coastal commission signed off on the LCPA. So the LCPA, the change to the land use plan, that is now official. We have been implementing it so far by the inclusion of a condition of approval on the CDPs that come before the commission or whether they be reported as an administrative permit or a full hearing. We are incorporating a condition of approval that is consistent with that land use plan modification. And the next step that we're beginning is, as directed by the city council, we're going to be bringing an item to ZoRaces to look at further implementing it. Are there other things that we can do right now with the language that's in the land use plan? What are those things? And then also evaluate perhaps passing an ordinance because like I said, we did a policy document. So the next thing may be to now look at an ordinance in our implementation plan. So like I said, next steps are to bring it to the ZoRaces Subcommittee of the Council.
Well, I know there's a lot of people interested in this, so it would be great if you would repeat exactly what you just said at the next council meeting, so more people hear about it and they'll get more inertia towards that ZoRaces meeting. I still have a few more comments and questions, but John, did you want to follow on the road?
I just wanted to add that Poison Free Malibu, which I worked on, has hired an attorney and came up with the language, partially the language for this ordinance or this LCPA, and they have taken it to the county of Ventura who adopted it last week. It could have been two weeks ago. So it's starting to move around on the coast. They have to go to the coastal commission, et cetera, but it's moving along in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, so what else? I've been in contact with Adrian. We still haven't sorted out the discontinuities in the story polls on the motel site, but apparently there's still some inertia moving forward on that to figure that out. There's still a discrepancy in what I've measured and what he sees, but he's gotten finally a plan from the poll people, a survey of the polls, and he's going to go out and look at that and then we're going to look at it together. So hopefully we'll we'll square that circle. And I know that that item has been pushed back to the later meeting, so.
Yes.
Yeah. And then at the last meeting, I asked a few questions of legal and I think it was Patrick. So Trevor, I don't know if you, did you hear that I asked a couple of questions that I wanted some answers back on?
What were they? Maybe I can help.
Yeah, okay. They both had to do with the Westward Beach project that was in front of us and one of them, and at the last week I just said, here are the questions. We don't need to discuss them now, but if you could come back to me with a cogent answer. One was that we were told at some point, and I forget by who, maybe it was you, that the planning commission did not have the scope or discretion to alter or suggest any improvements to the project at all, that in effect, we had to vote yes, no, up, down, whether just to approve it as is or not at all. And that to me seemed like not, I mean, that sort of obviates our role here.
I was there and that's not accurate because, you know, what I was, I believe I said was that you can't redesign the project. Now, you can apply appropriate conditions. They meet the standard of Nolan Dolan, you can condition the project, but you don't have the discretion to redesign the project. So that was, if I give the impression that it was differently than that, you did not have any discretion, you know, to condition the project, I apologize for that, but you do have full discretion to condition the project. You just can't redesign the project. You know, that's the design of the project is done by the city council as part of its proposal for that project.
And then the other question on that, that's sort of related really, is that I didn't understand how it was that we could ask Rob Duboe for a wave up rush study on the basis that it was a structure on the beach and, in fact, the planning report calls it a structure. And he, but somehow he said, no, no uprush study is needed, nor did we need to have any parking or traffic studies justifying the need for the thing. And it just seemed like the general feeling was it was sort of cart before the horse. If we can't have these studies that show what the heck are we doing here and why is this necessary? And, you know, and we were told he didn't, he didn't need to provide those. So I just wondered, why not?
Okay, that's a planning question. I don't know, Richard, if you know the answer offhand about why a wave upper study was not needed for that project. But if we don't, we can come back with that one, but I don't know the answer to that.
We can, we can definitely pose the question to our coastal engineer because I know that our coastal engineer was consulted on that project and we can find out a little bit more into what her determination was and why, how she got to that point.
Because it seemed like, I guess what made it feel a little absurd was that we had the new reality of what had happened to the road further down in Westward Beach just shortly before that. And it was sort of, the tone in the meeting was, well, you know, we already did the report and we've already made the plan and we just kind of have to ignore whatever happened down there. But since then, I've learned more recently that what they've done, the road repairs that they just did, those rocks are already washing away and the road has already been overtopped by wave action in the spot where they fixed it. And I also learned that several times the Sunset Parking Lot, the restaurant in the Sunset Parking Lot has been completely flooded by wave action. So to me, that just seems like, whoa, well, okay, we need a wave up rush study here. If we're getting ocean in the Sunset Parking Lot, then you know, let's, let's figure out what we're doing here.
Okay, I think Richard's goal is to get back to you.
Yeah, I'm just making a note of it now.
Yeah, thank you.
Writing down the question.
Okay.
I have one more comment if you have time, or let Dennis go.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maza.
I just realized that I believe Jeff and I are the only members of the planning commission who have had a Brown Act course and a they used to have a familiarization with the planning commission goals and objectives and it's been years and.
I've had a Brown Act course.
Oh, okay, maybe last time you were on, but.
I've had two myself.
But not on the planning commission. So I'm wondering how many years can we go between Brown Act?
Well, I'm glad you raised that, Commissioner Maza, because we are going to set a Brown Act course for the commissioners to attend coming up. Once we have the new commissioner coming on to replace David. So we will get that up there and we'll do a nice update for everyone and go from there. But thanks for bringing that up.
Dennis?
The, I think on the Westward Beach, I think the idea of the wall is to slow that water down. I think that's what we were told. Obviously, like I said, you guys, when we saw the oil spill on Huntington Beach, they got a lot of those walls there. So I'm sure that's what that's after is to help protect that. The other end, I don't know. That's, that's, that's a mess down there and somebody needs to think about it. I agree a million percent. There's no doubt. Okay. Okay, we've lost, we've lost a planner and we've lost one that's been here a long time, Justine Kendall. Man, I don't know, you know, Richard looks calm at the moment, but we have we're losing good people. I don't know what we do to hang on to them. It's hard to work here. Most people drive kind of a long ways. You know, is there some kind of a housing element we can do? Is it, do we take our city property that we have housing element on and build nice units and part of it, it could be for city people and you help and God, I don't know, but that didn't help because she probably has, you know, 100 things she was doing and now you divide that up to the, you know, the rest of the people that are already buried with their work. It's just, it's really hard. I feel for Richard and everybody in the top floor up there trying to, trying to get through all this stuff. The other thing is, Richard, my question is, I'm hearing about the APR and PV, so it's it takes 28 days for you guys to look at something, but right now, if you get it, it would be expired by the time you would read it or isn't that November 18th or something that's up? It's kind of a rock and a hard spot here?
Yes, and so you're right. It doesn't help to have people going out the door as these deadlines are coming up. But no, we're going to be, we've, we've already actually started going through the applications that we do have because yes, the deadline of November 8th is approaching us. And so we've already started reaching out to folks and to ask them where they are with their application, if we have outstanding materials, and then also to encourage them, if, you know, they plan on not getting us these materials, to encourage them to submit for a request for an extension to this. We're asking, I don't know if the council's going to extend the November 8th deadline, but to be on the safe side, we are informing folks that they need to apply for a waiver and we're also looking at ways to reach out to folks like we did for the fee waivers. So perhaps I shouldn't use a way, it's a waiver from the rules, I guess you could say, the grandfathering. We are looking at reaching out to folks to try to make sure everyone's aware of that November 8th deadline that's coming up on us.
Okay, great. All right. Good luck to you.
We're trying.
Okay, my last one's for Trevor. Our 5B tonight, they send out letters and cards and all kinds of great things for that 500-foot circumference, correct? So is it 500 feet? Exactly. So my thing is, I'm 637 feet away from Trankas Drive when I got my back gate. When I got the front door, I'm 713 feet as I took my roller that I use on my jobs and rolled it out. So I'm over the 500 feet. How's that count?
Commissioner Smith, let's, let's raise that when we get to, when we get to item 5B. I gotta go check with Patricia about the measurement while in the interim.
Okay, thank you.
Any staff report?
One more, sorry. We're going to miss you. You're definitely a quality human being and it's been wonderful to be with you on this commission. I'm honored to do so and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Richard or Trevor, anything you'd like to say?
And no, thank you. You guys mentioned about Justine. I was going to let everybody know about that. But no, I don't have any other staff comments at this time. Thank you.
I would just say, David, thank you for your service on this commission. I appreciate the diligence that you have brought to every meeting on this and you'll be missed here. And Justine is already missed. So.
I bet.
Chair Wild?
Yes.
Can we get consensus to dedicate the meeting to Richard Carrigan?
Sure. Do we need to vote on that or can we all just agree?
I think we can just agree.
I agree. Agree here.
Okay.
I think it's done. You're here. We're going to move now to the consent calendar and I guess the, well, this is just receive and file, right? And you were you pulling anything or just going to go ahead and receive and file this, I hope?
Yeah, no, we need to talk about 3B1 a little bit.
Just need, we need to know if anyone's playing anything from the consent calendar at this.
Anyone pulling anything?
3B1.
Okay, do you need a report or do you just have some questions you want to ask the staff?
No report necessary. We just had really one question or a series of questions around one issue.
David, before we go to that item, if you could just, as the chair, if there's no objection, then you can just receive and file the remaining items on the consent agenda. I believe it's, there are two de minimis waivers.
Except I think we took 3B2 off, didn't we?
Yeah, 3B3.
3B3.
3B3, yes. So here, yes, here no objection, 3B3 is received and filed. We'll go back to 3B1 for your question.
Yeah. So I've had some back and forth with staff a little bit about this and we just haven't sorted it out completely yet. And DDA, maybe, is he, he's not in the meeting here, is he?
No, I'll be answering the questions for you.
Okay. Yeah, so there was a, what caught my eye initially was that the biologist said that there are some trees planted right where the seepage pits would need to go and that if they were protected trees, then the biology confirmation would be void. And so I'm thinking, okay, I don't need to drive all the way up to Point Dume to see what kind of trees. I looked on Google Street View and they were deciduous and they sure looked like sycamores. So I called staff and I said, you know, these look like sycamore trees in the location between the two driveways, between the house and the road, basically right where the old seepage pits are and where there's going to be some new seepage pits in the general area. And there are two types of trees there. I couldn't quite tell whether they were sycamores, but the answer I got back was no, they're not. They're coastal live oaks and peach trees. Now, the peach trees we can forget about because they can just be pulled out, whatever. But the coastal live oaks are also protected. So the question remains whether the biology approval is void for there being protected trees right where the seepage pits are supposed to go.
Certainly. So what we found on this property is that there was some landscaping that was done without the benefit of permits. And as part of the landscaping, those native trees that are within that area that you're talking about, those were planted as part of the landscaping and that landscaping is currently being reviewed. It's a separate application. In 2019, the city processed a local coastal program amendment and as part of that local coastal program amendment, an exemption was added to LIP section 5.8. We added subsection C and what that exemption does is that it states native trees that were planted for ornamental purposes as part of an approved coastal development permit where their planting was not required by the LCP or Coastal Act for mitigation or restoration. So that that type of planting is exempt from the provisions of the native tree ordinance, chapter five. And so we've been able to conclude that these trees were not part of a required mitigation plan and they would. And they would fall under the qualifications of ornamental plantings. Now, obviously they were done without the benefit of permit and, and we are, there was a code enforcement action taken against the property. And we are currently in the process of rectifying that. So there is an exemption that would allow for the placement of the septic system there. And the tree would not have an impact on it, even though it is a native tree as defined by chapter five.
Has, has Dave Crawford heard this back and said, yeah, okay, my approval stands. It's, it's, I'm withdrawing the void.
And I'm glad you mentioned Dave Crawford. There's probably another announcement I should make. They're dropping like flies. No. So the new city biologist, her name is Courtney McCammon. And she used to be Dave's assistant biologist. She is now the city biologist and Dave is now her assistant. He's scaling back and getting ready for retirement. So Courtney is the new city biologist. I don't believe this has been discussed with Courtney, but I'd be glad to take it up with her tomorrow when she's in our offices.
Trevor, does this pose any issues? Does it sound like that, that this is ripe now or it needs to go back for some clarification yet?
Richard, what's, what's your opinion?
I would be using if, if this were brought to me and I saw this on my desk, I would be, I would say that I, I would fall back on the exemption that's in the local implementation plan of 5.8C. And I, that's what I would use because I would believe this to be approvable since we have evidence that the trees were not part of a required mitigation. And also since the, the evidence that we have based on our code enforcement case shows these as new plantings.
Okay. I, I guess that all makes sense to me. What, does John, yeah, I knew you were going to.
Other questions, other questions.
Go ahead.
Are you done? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I talked to Adrian this afternoon because I, again, I'd like to hear how big these houses are when we go approve septic tanks.
Yeah.
Because you know, we have one that's bigger than the other and it's got five times the size of ten. This house has, is a remodel. It's not a fire burnout. And it's increased from 3,416 to 5,392, an increase of almost 2,000 square feet, over 50%. And it doesn't, what I'm trying to figure out is why something like that wouldn't come to us and why there wouldn't be an analysis of, I didn't see an analysis of how many walls were taken down, how many walls were made, interior walls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It just seemed to get approved and done. Is there an explanation of why a remodel wouldn't go through the normal remodel process?
So on this project, the remodel, so what you have before you this evening is not the remodel. This is strictly, this is an approval only for the wastewater treatment system. The remodel was part of an administrative plan review. And we have certain qualifications that an application or a scope of work must meet before it triggers the need for a coastal development permit. And with this in general, if there are no deed restrictions on the property, if the appeal zone also plays a factor, this property where they are located, the addition of the square footage didn't trigger an issue with the appeal zone. So there were exemptions in the local coastal program that allowed for this scope of work. It did not trigger the need for a CDP. Whereas like I said, the wastewater, obviously that needs a coastal development permit.
Well, let me ask you this. Why wasn't there an analysis of the 50% rule? That, that does trigger a CDP. And we, and a whole bunch of rooms in this house got made bigger on the outside, which indicates to me that there were some existing walls that became interior walls. And there's no analysis of it that I can tell. So how do you know it doesn't require a CDP if you don't do that analysis?
Did you read the administrative plan review document?
I never saw it.
So perhaps Adrian could speak more to that. So administrative plan reviews, those, there's chapter, title 17, I think it's 62, 64. It lists certain decisions that a planning director can make. And when the city council created that list and they worked on that ordinance in 2004, they specifically removed the need for public notice for certain types of projects. And so the work that took place and Adrian could go into it a bit more, did not trigger the need for any sort of noticing or, or hearing before the planning commission. Adrian, I'm, I'm having seen the approval document, but I would assume by the other approval documents I've seen, we do have a wall analysis in it, correct?
Yeah. And I apologize, Commissioner Maza, Commissioner Maza asked earlier in the, in the day to get a copy of the approved notice of decision for the addition and remodel to existing residents. We did go over that approval earlier today and we did go over the fact that there were some exterior walls that were replaced as part of that application. I think the total number of exterior walls removed was somewhere around 20%. So nowhere close to the 50% rule. And so as a result, it was allowed to be approved under an administrative plan review application, which goes back to what Richard was saying. That's something that can be approved without a coastal development permit.
So we'll make sure to, we can send Commissioner Maza a copy of that, correct?
Absolutely. I just, it slipped my mind and we had a busy agenda today.
Okay, well, let me just ask you another question. See, we've, we've sent back houses that have been approved because of the difference in the way 50% rules are calculated. So we just have to trust that if you don't report it to us, we don't get to look at it. But if this was a two-story house, then wouldn't it come under the site plan review? And wouldn't we have to look at it since it's not a Wolsey house?
If the addition was over 18 feet in height, that would be subject to a cycle and review that is appealable to the coastal commission, but as Richard mentioned, excuse me, planning commission. But as Richard mentioned before, the application is still a director's decision, even for a cycle and review. And the application was not appealed to the commission.
Now, if nobody ever got notified, this is a Trevor question. How do you appeal?
So, but, but people did get notified. There was a, a notice of application that was sent out to everyone that lives within 500 feet of the property.
John, I think we're getting a little bit off. We, we're, we have in front of us an OWTS approval. I don't disagree with what you're raising, but that isn't what's in front of us.
No, but it is dependent upon a valid CDP or ACDP. Okay. It's dependent upon that. And so therefore I'm just trying to figure out if, if staff can decide never to send us anything. And for example, noticing who's going to appeal if you get a notice, you get a little card, is that card, would that card have said two-story over 50%, over 80% increase in size? Or would this, would the public just get a little card saying, we got an appeal of a application on this address?
So.
I'm sorry.
Same thing, no problem. The card that they get, the notification in the mail does have a project description on it. And it's not that staff is making decisions or, or staff is deciding on policy here. We do follow in chapters, title 17, there's a set of criteria. And we follow that criteria for when a public notice is required and when it is not. It's, it's not a choice that we have as a department. And then also it, the, the same on the need for coastal development permit. In chapter 13, 13.4, it lists specific incidences where a permit is required or isn't required. And in the case of this project, if I'm not mistaken, it was the remodel of the home, the addition to the home, and then also a garage or detached accessory structure. And the LIP specifically says that, you know, accessory structures other than attached guests or attached or detached guest units and second residential units, like so garages, studios, workshops. Those things are consistent with the exemption that's provided in the local coastal program.
I thought it said with the exception of accessory structures.
It, that, and I can grab the language if you like to.
I'm just, and then I have one last question to Trevor. It's my understanding, our codes in the LIP, we don't just go on the municipal code, we go on the LIP, which is superior. And in our codes, I believe, and maybe in the LIP, all decisions by the planning director are appealable. And I keep seeing in report after report, this is non-appealable, non-appealable, non-appealable. How does that happen?
For, for this project, this is an ACDP, right?
Yeah.
So isn't the process laid out there? So in this case, it, it is reported to you. And then the decision is, you know, whether you want to make it a full CDP or not. So it, it does come back to the, the planning.
No, but the decision, it says the decision is not appealing. We can make it a full CDP, but if some public person in the public wanted to appeal this, I'm assuming he could. Or they could. And the staff report says, no, they can't. And I was assuming that all planning director decisions are appealable.
Patricia, you have your hand raised there?
Yes, I do. I'm going to look up the staff report right now to see, but typically ACDPs are approved by the planning director and appealable to the planning commission and to the city council. So the local appeal process does apply to ACDPs.
It's on page nine of 10, Patricia, I believe is what you're looking for, local appeal. It's the paragraph above reporting.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm wrong on that, huh?
Okay, we're going to move along to the next one here and this one now we're done with and we're going to receive and file it.
Did, did we have any, any public speakers?
We do not have any public speakers. Thank you.
Okay. And there were any disclosures anybody had for this item?
No.
No. No, I think this item and also I guess, well, we didn't discuss it, but 3B, 3B3 also, which we've received and filed.
None. Actually, my disclosure is I was in the house before a burnout.
Okay.
So if I share a while, then if there aren't any, is there any motion to make a full CDP if you want to receive and, and file that item, we'll move on to the next one.
Exactly. So both of those, B1 and B3 have both been received and filed. So we're going to now move on to 5B. Coastal permit 21049, application to implement overnight parking restrictions and install associated regulatory signage on the west side of Trent's Canyon Road between Pacific Coast Highway and Tappahoe Drive.
Before we start that item, Adrian, Patricia, do, do we get a, a firm distance on how far away Commissioner Smith is from, from the, the subject property?
My apologies. Patricia just asked me to look into that minutes before the last item. So I have not had a chance to actually look at the map to see what the exact distance is. So it may take another five to 10 minutes to get that information.
Chair, why would it be okay to take a short break just so we can make sure what the distance is here on this item?
It's okay with me. I.
I second it.
You can come back with 7:20 be enough time, Adrian? If we just come back at 7:20?
Yes, I would be fine.
Okay.
Okay, then let's adjourn until 7:20.
Okay. Everyone can turn off their, mute themselves and turn off their video, please. Okay, everyone could turn off their mute themselves and turn off their video, please.
Are we back? We need Craig.
I'm here. Where am I? There I am.
There you are.
Are we? Let's see, ready to resume?
Yes.
Patricia?
That's a good one, Zoom.
All right, then.
Resume?
We we are back in session. And I think Adrian, someone was going to answer the. Question of Dennis's feet from the road.
Yeah, so I think Dennis is is correct. I was able to confirm that uh, the property is actually less than five hundred feet is is closer to uh. Three hundred and sixty feet or so from from uh, Trankis Canyon. Uh, the unit number, however, it's it's hard to tell and might be over five hundred feet. I think that was. What Commissioner Smith was uh, indicating before, um. I think uh, maybe uh, Trevor can talk about our policy there.
Yeah, given that the property sells within five hundred feet, then the recommendation would be to um, recuse Commissioner Smith on this item. Um, but if the if it's a pleasure of the commission, um, perhaps you could um. Hear the last item, so you could participate in that, and then he can make a statement for the record and recuse, and then uh, be able to sign off for the night for the last item.
You mean reverse the two that we're gonna hear so that we can go straight to the new business and come back?
Yeah, then he doesn't need to hang off, hang out off off camera to to rejoin.
Okay, well, without objection, why don't we do that and move to seven A, the public speaker time?
We actually need a motion to uh.
All right.
I'm moved.
Set, right here a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Patricia?
Commissioner Masa?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
That's great, yes.
Vice Chair Wild?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to. Public speaker time referrals. Consider whether to allow members of the public to defer their time to another speaker during virtual meetings. I don't, is I don't know if there's gonna be a staff presentation on this, good?
Yes.
And, okay?
Good evening, Chair. I'll be making a quick presentation here and then. Uh, the commission can discuss this. Uh, this, as you may recall, is one of two items. That the commission brought up. One was, what you have before you, the timed referrals, and the second issue that we'll be bringing to you. At your request was an issue about. The timing for submittal of public comment in relation to the uh, the 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 meeting date. And so I. Want you to know we have not forgotten about that. Uh, we were just tackling one at a time, so we were, we wrapped this one up tonight, then. Uh, my plan is to start a staff report and bring you the the next one on public comment for our November meeting. If I may have the next slide, please? So currently, or excuse me, not currently, but before COVID. Pre-virtual meetings in the normal days where we all met without masks on our face. Uh, we used to use, it was a hard copy speaker slip. Folks would uh, sign that prior to the meeting. And that would get submitted. We had a a process by which the public. Was granted three minutes for each member of the public, or you could forego your three minutes. And you could defer one minute to a speaker. And a speaker could get a total of eight minutes. There could be five deferrals to that one person. And what we used to do was, if the speaker was, um, say it was Joe. We'd ask if Mary, Sue, uh, Tom, and uh, whoever else, we'd ask them to acknowledge they were in the meeting. And if they were present in the meeting, we would then say, okay, uh, Sue has given uh, Joe a minute and and so forth. Uh, next slide, please? However, in the times that we are in now, uh, we're using a Zoom-based platform. And we have an online speaker signup sheet. That was our practice until recently. Uh, we've now gone to a system where. In order to ensure that everyone has an ability to comment, if someone raises their hand during the public comment time and they haven't been signed up. We still acknowledge them and then go back after the fact and get their information. When it comes to defer a speaker deferment, this is something that's been a a. Topic, uh, I know for since I've become the director, this is something that you as a commission have brought up and wanted to address. And the issue has been that uh, the the city was limited by the Prime Gov platform. Uh, for having some sort of mechanism to verify uh, speakers and then uh, a a lot the time over. Uh, on uh, is a more automated way rather than a mech or a hand uh, done way. Next slide, please? This item was recently taken up by the city council. And the city council did acknowledge that what could happen is that. They could verify each persons in the room by calling on them. Uh, asking if they're present or by having the staff somehow figure out if they're present. Uh, but what the city council just determined was that, one, this would result in additional staff time. So they. Wanted to um, not dedicate uh, that additional staff time. There was a higher priority for it to be uh, serving the public in other ways. They, the city council also had concerns about meeting delays. There was also a concern about how do you create um, some sort of different signup platform since. Uh, there isn't a um, an automated procedure for folks to sign up. And then lastly, were the technology limitations which have yet to still be addressed uh, by our software vendor. So it's not that the city council. Uh, does not want to do this, it's that they looked at it and they looked at the impacts that it would have. The staff time and confusion and. Uh, they were looking perhaps to find a better solution or to see how much longer we use these Zoom platforms. If I may have my next slide, please? So with that, that's kind of a a where we were to where we are, and also some information from the council. And. As we mentioned previously, uh, when this first came up, when Chair Jennings brought up the question of deferring time. And Trevor can speak to this as well. The the chair does have the ability, and this commission has done that, to informally. Allow for extra time on items if they feel that it's needed, i- if it's warranted. Uh, because of the public input necessarily to render a decision. And so that is still an option that is available to the commission. You you can still uh, give additional time. If members, now that's at the discretion of the chair. However, another option is that. I- if the majority of the commission would like, and I don't know Trevor was the right word here, uh, a policy or a procedure, but. They, the my understanding is that the majority of the commission could vote to create a practice, I guess perhaps is a better word. Uh, for some sort of a formal way to do this, so there's not a concern that the chair is manipulating or or. Or leading this at his discretion. So it's more of a. The 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 community of, I guess you could say, of commissioners. So those are some options, uh, and. You know, and and other option, of course, too, is to bring this issue up with uh, your, the council members that each that appointed each of you. Uh, so that they know for sure your thoughts on this, and that way the council can look at. Ways to move forward. And also, as I mentioned, the the council is who sets staff's priorities and how they allot staff's time. And they did have a concern about this. Uh, so Trevor and I are available for any questions.
Uh, Rich, one thing just to clarify to Ri- Richard, um, you know, um. As you met, as Richard mentioned, the chair has discretion to allow extra time from particular items. Um, a majority of the commission also has the ability to do that if uh, on a particular item, if they want to hear and. You know, additional speakers or set different um, limits, they can do that as well.
Um. Tangentially, but related to the topic sort of 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 public comment. Uh, yeah, pursuant to AB three sixty one. I just want to clarify that our policy has been that we we cannot cut off public speaker signups when an item is called. We must continue to accept speaker signups until all speakers have been heard and public comment for the item is closed. And we must accept speaker signups in the form of raised hands in Zoom, which has been the policy that we've been following in any event. But just wanted to get that out there. Uh, the other thing to mention here in terms of the time deferral. Is I think the city council turned it down, as you mentioned. And I think there was some concern in discussions I've heard of confusion between if if the commission does it one way and the council does it another way. You may have applicants saying, wait, wait, I I was told I could do this here and now I can't do that there. That's not a m- major reason not to do it, but it will create some confusion if we do something separate. And I don't know if um, disclosures on this issue is warranted.
Yeah, Chair Chair Well, I I appreciate you bringing up AB three sixty one because that is true that uh, now if people raise their hands. We will call on them, um, you know, that we before we required them to to sign up. So. I believe that informally we've been doing that, but that will be a a change here. And then uh, this is a a, and I'm dealing with the procedures of the planning commission, so there's no need for disclosure on this, but. Uh, I would suggest opening public comment before you open the debate between the commissioners, uh, to see if there's any. Anyone that wants to weigh in on it and then I'll bring it back for discussion.
Uh, Patricia, anybody out there who'd like to comment?
We do not have any speakers.
Anybody wants to?
We know.
Nope. Tells everything.
It's a small group tonight. I'm I'm hoping for a world's record in terms of how short this meeting could be. Don't throw me off, John.
We've had a six-minute meeting, so we've already passed that.
I'll settle for second place. You're on.
Uh, I just want to make a couple of comments and and. I think the most important thing is fairness in a full hearing. And we've had instances recently where I considered it. Unfair that the public was not able to. Consolidate. At least five minutes or eight minutes or whatever we're talking about. Under one speaker who was an expert. And give a presentation. We just had uh. A situation with two houses on the beach last meeting, we gave. The applicant thirty minutes. And we gave the speakers three minutes. And they didn't have any way of. Organizing. Ahead of time, a coherent. Uh, presentation because they didn't know whether they could combine minutes. So I think it's. Very important that we allow them to combine minutes, and I think it's very simple to do without any technology. We. We have. It's up to the the lead speaker, if you're combining minutes, to make sure his people shows up and he knows how many minutes he's gonna speak or he or she. Because you gotta time it down to the second practically and practice it in front of a mirror. So if they lose a person, they they're in real trouble, but. We now require to pick anybody who raises their hand. And. If I were speaking, if I were in on a complicated issue like the. Uh, billing on a landslide or uh, a sixty-foot-high motel or whatever, where you have a lot of opposition. We get. The benefit of saving. A lot of time. And getting a coherent presentation. Rather than just lining everybody up for three minutes. And it's very simple to do. You you tell them. That you tell the public that they have their. They can get up to five additional minutes. And then all Patricia has to do. Is look at who's here. Say, raise your hand, little hand. Um. If you're gonna give those five minutes. And she writes those names down and they can't speak. Uh, it's, it doesn't take any electronics at all. Zero. And it allows. The public to have a chance. You you know, from reading these staff reports, you cannot analyze one in three minutes unless you're really, really good. Okay, and this is the public. Uh, so. I can't see why we would want to spend our time. Listening to. Five people. Who really. Just want to participate. And 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 will give us the same answer over and over and over again versus eliminating ten minutes of speaker time. And having one person who gathers the facts.
I think good point made. Got it. Any other comments, commissioners? Craig?
Yeah, um, a couple of comments about the state of things and then a couple suggestions about where we might go. I I think what council wants to do, as I was starting talking about about other issues earlier in the evening. Is different than what we do, and uh, your point is well taken, David, that there could be some confusion. Uh, if we have different procedures, but maybe that could be baked into the narrative that people just, the story that people get straight from the front is, yeah, the council and the. Planning commission do things differently. So that, as you said, I think we could overcome that. But yeah, we tend to have smaller crowds. We tend to have items that are more, sometimes more technical, um, and as. John said, it's difficult to make a a argument in three minutes, so. Um, and we have done it. We we allowed bundling with the telecom ordinance. And I'll get back to that in a second. Uh, we've been flexible about time and adding extra time when we've needed translators. So that's sort of similar in terms of of the the flexibility that we've allowed. And I'm a little. I'm a little getting more towards the solutions now. I'm a little troubled about how, why it would be so difficult with Prime Gov. I mean, it seems like we could just have them put a little text right in there that says something to the effect of. Um, if you want to arrange for donated speaker time. Call or email staff at least one day in advance and give them your list of speakers or, you know, something that says, here's a way to give an organized presentation. And I don't think we'd be having that happen very often. So, you know, maybe once or twice max per meeting, would staff get a call from somebody saying, hey, you know what? We want to do an organized thing. hey, you know what? We want to do an organized thing and here's our plan. And um, when we put our hands up in the meeting, you know, look for that, be ready for that. Yeah. So I I think I think we can do it. I think we've already shown that we can be flexible about it. And even on on the website, even if the prime gov page isn't modifiable. Um, certainly there is a city webpage that could have language on it right there that says, here's an option. If you want to structure your your presentation this way. You know, either however, the rest of us decide now how to do it. But I think it's easy enough to just put that on the website somewhere.
And I just want to make sure I clear on the what you're proposing and what John said, too. There would be a maximum so of what are we saying here? Eight minutes? So it would be the the three minutes plus five add-ons? Is that what we're saying?
That's what we've done historically. So
Okay, just want to be clear.
Yeah.
Uh, Craig, anything? I'm sorry, Dennis, I was looking.
Yeah, um. Well, yes, I I I think people should have their extra time, but I also feel like we're really close to getting back in the building. And I think us messing around with this for like three more meetings probably isn't worth it for that. I would imagine by the first of the year, we're probably in the building. Maybe we're going to get lucky and we'll be in the building on our in the second meeting in in November or the first one in December. So I don't know that we have to go through all this right now. Once we're back in the building, we're back in business and back to normal things. Yes, we need sometimes people would like that extra time. I don't think it's worth it right now. And it's council's call.
Well, whoa, hang on. I think we get to make some of our own rules. And anyway, maybe you're right. Maybe we could do it in a little more ad hoc way and just say uh, staff can anticipate between now and then which items might have a lot of extra speakers like, you know, the motel, for example. And um, be able to entertain those uh, requests in advance, like on the telecom stuff, I saw what was coming and Commissioner Jennings was chair and I called him up and I just said, hey, we this is you got all these things. Maybe you want to get together with those guys and arrange some plan. And that's what they did. I had nothing to do with it, but he figured out a way for them to consolidate their time. So maybe we can just do that in an ad hoc way till.
Let me add something, Craig, though. We need, number one, we can put in whatever resolution we have that if the council says they're going to open the buildings, they're voting next week on that. Next week, October twenty fifth. Okay, they're not going to open the building, but if they do, we can say if they open the building, all bets are off. But um, what I'm saying is you need to give the applicant, the commenter certainty.
Yeah.
They don't want to plan a eight minute speech and they say, no, it's three. Okay. And we don't need anything at all from electronics on this. You need one speaker who says, I have some people that are going to join me. And Patricia says, are there five of them? Raise your hand. They can't raise their hand if they're not there, so we know they're there. We just cross them off the list as being not being able to speak and it's over. There's no electronics. There's no staff time.
Thank you. Trevor, is this something that we would have a motion and vote in terms of our what our procedure would be? Or we do this on an ad hoc basis? How how do we formalize what we're going to do or not do?
Well, it depends on, you know, what the the pleasure of the commission is. If if the recommendation is that that I anyone that wants to have extra time that they speak with the chair and then they work that out with the chair in advance. Then um, you know, we could just get consensus on that. And then the planning staff can advise anyone that uh, wants to do this, uh, to speak with the speak with the chair about it and and set that up going forward. If you want to memorialize something in a more formal policy, um, you know, staff can can work to, uh, you know, bring something back that would you know, uh, set that up or explain it. Um, you know, that could be brought back. You know, on the consent calendar or something along those lines. If you want to go, you know, that route.
Here's here's the person that does all the work right now. She says.
Patricia has popped up.
No, I just want to make one comment before she talks, and that is that when you're telling people they have to call the staff and tell them who's going to talk and register all this stuff, you're wasting staff time.
Yeah, no, what what Trevor just said makes sense to have them. It's just put a little note on the website that says, contact the chair.
No, I'm saying, no, let me explain this. We don't need to go through all that hassle and have people calling the chairman and everything else. Either somebody wants to speak or they don't. Either they show up to the meeting or they don't. Okay, just like if they were sitting in a room in front of you. Okay, if we have to go through all this rigmarole, then then whoever's chair has to sit there and say, well, this person called me and they got five people here, but one of them's different. What do I do? Or uh, are you really so and so or this and that? Where when all you're doing is saying, if you give up your minutes, you can't speak.
Okay, I don't got it. Patricia, why don't you go ahead?
So what Commissioner Masa is saying, there are there are simple solutions to this. So it is workable. Um, Prime Gov has offered a solution. It creates a little bit of work for staff, but then again, we do get calls already. We do have to organize the applicants. So there are solutions to this. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I don't think we now need to get into the technology of Prime Gov and what we should and shouldn't be doing. If it's the consensus of the commission that we want this to work in a way where we can have the additional time allocated, why don't we simply direct staff to come back to us with a proposal that would put the least amount of additional work on members of the commission, meaning not necessarily call the chair and come back at the next meeting or whenever is appropriate. Maybe after we know when council votes uh, with a proposal that we could then consider.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Well, it is a motion.
I second.
It is now, Craig.
Yeah, I I I wanted to say, I I think John's right that it can be pretty informal that way, but I also think we need to have some kind of comment published on the website or somewhere that allows that lets people understand that this is an option. They can look it up and see. And it's not just something you do if you know how to do it or.
Well, that should be on the first page of the agenda report, which always tells you how to do things.
There you go. I think staff is hearing what you're saying. So when they come back with a proposal, assuming this passes, uh, they'd be wise to consider doing that.
Yeah.
Uh, can we call a vote on this motion?
Sure, sure. Well, just to clarify, I believe the motion is for um, staff to re to uh, return with um with with details of how this could be implemented um, at a future on a future agenda when the when uh, we'll have the new planning commissioner um in your position coming through and uh, and that that would be brought within how it would be um, implemented. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
For the first mission, I would like to also add to that an instruction to make the procedure as taking as minimal amount of time of staff's time as possible.
Absolutely. That's a friendly amendment, which I accept.
Can I just say, do we do we need to go through this, like send it to staff and bring it back? We we can't, we're it seems like we're almost there. We can't just like say, yeah, that's a good idea. Let's vote on it and approve it. Are we? Are we not almost there?
Well, but I I think we're trying to avoid how how Prime Gov ought to be tweaked to make this work when we I just don't want to get into the weeds here when we're sort of in agreement on how we want the process to be at the end of the day done. How we get there, I think is still up to staff to suggest.
Fisher Hill, it'll it'll be brought back. And then if you want to make further changes to it, you can do it and just adjust it at that point.
But this could be done very quickly. Uh, Richard, can we have this back at the next meeting?
Patricia, how are we?
Yes, we could have it back. What I was going to propose is a solution that people just raised, the chair can always say, if you would like to defer your time, please raise your hand. And then you could go through those names. Um, and then find out who they want to defer their time to. We can update the city's website or handouts to speed. So that's an alternative if you don't want us to come back.
And a good one.
That's fine. And and let's put a maximum on, you know, how many, three minutes with five additional or something. So we don't start creating, you know, a monster.
I totally agree because we don't even have to mess with Prime Gov under that system. They have nothing to do with it.
So the are this is then done?
Well, we got to make I'll make that motion.
What what is the what is the motion?
The motion is unless David wants to make it, is that at the next meeting, staff comes back with the simplest way to adopt a system of allowing three minute speaker with five deferred minutes by the raising of hands and the tabulation by the city, uh, whoever's running the meeting, the Patricia, basically.
I I think you just presented that just now. I think we can just say, yeah, that's a good idea. Let's vote. Yes.
That's the motion. Somebody can second it and off we go.
Yeah, I second it.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Hill's correct.
Trevor, what happens to the previous motion that was just on the table? Do I have to? Or is this a substitution motion?
I'll withdraw my second if that helps.
We I don't think we do we have a second on David's motion?
Yes, I second it. So I'll withdraw that.
David, you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Okay, what what is the new motion? I I and we need to get clarity about what the new motion is exactly.
Uh, I'll repeat it. That we instruct staff to bring back at the next meeting, a procedure to allow five deferrals on its for a three minute speaker, total of eight minutes by raising the hands of five people who can no longer speak and tabulated by Patricia and or her substitute. And those people cannot speak and
You're looking to, are you looking to bring back a policy that mirrors the the in-person donation of time system? But it would be done through a a raising of hands to verify the
Yes.
other people.
Yes.
That's what we're looking for. So
A shorthand way to say it.
Okay.
We're doing that right now.
And yeah, well.
I think, yes.
Patricia just gave it to us just now, so we
So I, if I could clarify with the motion, John, are you looking for the the procedure I just stated? Do you want us to begin this on November first? Then I would assume for you is direct staff to start.
I I think we want to bring this back so that then we can give notice for the next meeting. So you want to bring back what this is? And then it can be put on the consent calendar. And then if that works for the commission, then it can be implemented for the next meeting. Does that work?
That's good enough. I understand our next meeting isn't a killer. So uh,
Yes.
If the motel was on it, I'd I'd really want to put it in now. Okay, that's fine with me. I'll accept that, uh, whatever Patricia said.
Okay, let me let me see if I can wrap up the motion. The motion would be to um, have staff bring back an item to implement a a uh, a policy for donation of time mirroring the in-person donation in time donation rules. Um, but implementing a a raising your hand um, system for the donation of time.
The mechanics of which staff can work out and propose to us.
Staff has discretion to um, a- adjust that that proposal um, based on investigation to make it as simple and is the involving the least amount of time for staff.
Staff time and commission time, least amount. Yes.
Without reference.
That's what my motion is.
Okay. Is there a second?
David, second.
Yes, yes, sorry, second.
I'll call the rule. Commissioner Masa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Hallelujah. Dennis, your evening is over.
Hey, thanks for dropping by, you guys.
Uh, hold on, hold on, uh, before you go, uh, Commissioner Smith, you need to wait till we call the next item and then you'll need to state for the record the reason for your recusal that you're within five hundred feet. So we we need to make that for the record.
I I knew you, I knew you, no doubt.
Well, then I'm going to call item five B. Is that right? Yes. Coastal development permit number twenty-one oh four nine, application to implement overnight parking restrictions and install associated regulatory signage on the west side of Trancais Canyon Road between Pacific Coast Highway and Tapia Drive. Now then.
I need to recuse myself from this item.
And 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 Commissioner Smith, the reason for that is because your your residence is located within five hundred feet of the project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. See you later. Aloha. Aloha, that'd be good.
Good evening, Chair members of the planning commission. What you have before you this evening is a coastal development permit that would allow for the installation of parking signage uh, that would implement a parking management plan in the vicinity of Trancais Canyon Road up to Tapia Drive. So I may have the next slide, please. This particular item uh, was first started through an ordinance. Ordinance four ninety-three was presented and adopted uh, by the city council uh, on September twenty seventh. And the next phase to implement the ordinance would be to process the coastal development permit to address the the signage, to installation of the signage. Uh, this item was something that was brought up by the mayor as well as a couple other council members uh, due to members of the public uh, presenting them, presenting to them photographs of cars or oversized vehicles that were being parked on the street for extended periods of time and not being moved. Next slide, please. The area in yellow on this map is the area where the the parking implementation of the implementation of the parking management plan would take place. Now, the southernmost boundary of it is the intersection of Trancais Canyon and Pacific Coast Highway and the northernmost boundary is the intersection of Tapia and Trancais Canyon Road. The signage would only be applicable to the west side. That is the the side of the screen there that is towards Ventura, so opposite of the vintage grocers and Starbucks. There are already parking restrictions uh, that are located on the east side of this, the side towards the market or Malibu High School. Next slide, please. This is basically the same thing, but just with an aerial photo, maybe makes it a bit easier uh, to comprehend the area. And once again, it's the area in yellow, which is approximately about fifteen hundred feet. Next slide, please. So the proposed parking restriction would prohibit parking at twelve AM to three AM daily. And as I mentioned, it would only be on the west side of the street. Next slide, please. Staff recommends approval of the proposed coastal development permit, which would allow for the implementation of the ordinance as adopted by the city council. I did receive some questions about the installation of the signage. I made contact with our public works department and what they explained to me was that the numbers you have in the staff report, that was a rough estimate done by our traffic or I won't say traffic engineers, but the folks that handled signage and curb cuts and painting of curbs, our public works inspectors. They had given us that number. Um, I had a talk with the uh, the uh, city's public works director. And what Rob explained to me is that essentially they're looking at posting a sign about once every two hundred feet. In some cases, it might be as close as a hundred and fifty feet. The goal is to use existing poles um, or you know, existing structures that are along uh, Trancais Canyon Road if possible. If not possible, they would have to install new poles. I was unable to get a number of the new poles that would need to be installed. Uh, so that's why the 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 conditions are written the way they are. We've left an open number of poles, but um, based off of the discussion with our public works and building or director. My estimate is that if you figure you had a sign that it was at the start of the parking restriction all the way to the end, uh, you're probably looking at no more than nine signs, uh, since there was a concern about the number of signs. Uh, once again, I apologize that I can't tell you exactly how many new poles are needed. Uh, that is something that they're going to be working out in the field. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Although I think it's unlikely, is possible any disclosures that people would like to make here? Craig, none, John?
Well, I I did talk to Richard about the number of signs this afternoon.
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to Richard briefly. I don't know that we came up with any new information though.
None for me. Uh, any speakers on this subject from the public or otherwise?
We do not have any speakers.
Uh, Trevor, you look like you want to say something.
If, if anybody wants to speak or they want to raise their hand right now?
Is there anybody out there?
No, I think it's just us chickens here.
All right.
I'm still gunning for the time record, second place. John, go ahead.
Okay.
Briefly, briefly.
Now then, this one, uh, we got to get right because, uh, first, if Richard would put up the, the map again, um, this is supposed to be exempt from coastal. But on the map, we're within 300 feet of the beach. So it's my opinion, we have to knock, knock some of the end, uh, down by PCH off. Uh, because it will become coastal appealable if it isn't.
Richard, you're shaking, I'm sorry. Trevor, you're shaking your head.
Yeah, we, we, we can't adjust the, the project to, to try to base it on appealability. It's, it's the, the city's project and, you know, how they're proposing it. It's going to depend on, you know, um, you know, what, what the location is and where they're going to be installing these.
See, but I, I'm not talking about signs. I'm talking about the no parking. Coastal, can, anybody can appeal a, uh, any development or restrictions within 300 feet of the beach. It just so happens the way they delineated the road, it's with, uh, the yellow portion of the road, it's within 300 feet of the beach. So all I'm doing is proposing that that be terminated somewhere beyond 300 feet of the beach.
Commissioner Maza, I gotta cut you off here because it's not appropriate for a commissioner to try to, um, adjust a project so it's not appealable to the coastal commission.
Can I, can I, there's a solution here. There's a solution, which may be that, that first initial portion all down close to the highway is, there's not parking there anyway.
Commissioner Hill, like I said, we, we can't try to adjust the project to, to game about whether it's um, appealable to the coastal commission, but maybe Richard could explain about the project because it's been noticed is not appealable to the coastal commission, or maybe he wants to explain why.
Never mind coastal commission. My comment would be simply that the west side or it, it's really sort of the north, well, whatever, the, the west side down next to the highway is, there's no parking there allowed anyway. It's already, it's a bus zone. It's the something. So this project can't start till a certain point regardless. And so the question is whether that point where it can start is within 300 feet or not.
Well, the question is, Ken, do we have an accurate staff report?
Well, the, the item's been noticed as, as being not appealable to the coastal commission. I don't see anyone here, um, saying anything about it. There were no public speakers tonight. I don't think we've received any communication, um, you know, uh, contesting that. Richard, you want to lay a record about why it's not appealable? Uh, I think that can, can put the issue to rest.
Oh, certainly. I did double check the appeal jurisdiction maps and based off of what I could see on the map here, um, the, the appeal jurisdiction on that west side of the street ends the, this line, I've zoomed it in a bunch, but it's, it's, how can I describe this? It, 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 it ends on, I'll say, the curb of Pacific Coast Highway. It doesn't appear to wrap around on the west side. Yes, the east side of the street has a smidgen that has appeal zone, um, uh, that is in the appeal zone, uh, but as Commissioner Hill pointed out, uh, you know, you've, there's a, there's a red zone there, a driveway and a bus stop and another driveway.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so I, I, to me, that gives you a little extra buffer in there because like I said, on the appeals map, it appears that the west side of the street is literally at the curb of Pacific Coast Highway. And, and, you know, I don't know how to describe this, uh, you know, if you've got, here's Tranca's and here's PCH, it, it stops here on the PCH. It doesn't appear to go up uh, Tranca's on the west. So I would say that we are outside the appeal zone based on my read of that. And we also did not receive any comment on this, uh, and it was shared with the California Coastal Commission.
Uh, my second question is, our only finding we have to make is there's no loss of public parking. And in talking to Richard this afternoon, I wondered why, why we were choosing the west side of the road? Because that's obviously the most viewed blockage and the most, uh, dangerous, et cetera. And the answer was, and correct me if I'm wrong, there aren't as many parking spaces on the east side. So I don't know how you can make finding one, one saying you're not eliminating public parking, since this is public parking. It's not beach parking. It's public parking. Uh, where you're saying you're going to take 50 cars and put them in 20 car spaces in the middle of the night. And the reason why I think this is very important is where the, number one, I'd like to know if the oversized car limit thing does, has anything to do with it, but number two, where are those cars going to go? Guess what? Three in the morning, they're going to Malibu West. And people are going to wake up in the morning with a big giant thing parked in front of their house. And it could be 30 of them. They can't go up canyon. There's no place to park up canyon. They can't go into the park. It's closed. It's no parking from the park, the dog park north or east or whatever it is up in the hills. So we don't want to create a situation that makes it worse. And if we say, okay, you got 50 cars and you're going to move over and put them in 20 spaces, you have to figure out where they're going to go. So I think we need to limit this to the number of spaces available on the east side that are legal. Uh, otherwise we're creating a worse situation. Can you comment on that, Richard? Or do we have a traffic engineer? But where are the 30 cars going to go?
So the way that we crafted the findings here is very similar to the findings that we used when we did the, the flip-flop, if you want to call it that, parking along Pacific Coast Highway. Uh, because if you think about what we did in the, the, uh, Las Tunas area, we essentially removed at one point of night, there, there is no parking on the ocean side of the highway, which effectively eliminates X number of spaces from that vicinity. There's parking across the street at that time. And then, um, that parking on the other side gets eliminated between a certain time and there's parking on the other side. At no point do we ever uh, create a one-for-one replacement ratio. That would be physically impossible because we can't create new parking. Uh, we're not doing any development like that here. So as we mentioned in our findings, that, you know, these parking restrictions take place during a time period when there is a low demand on impacts to parking. And yes, there is going to be an overall reduction in the number of spaces in the area. However, while there is a reduction in spaces, that still does not preclude the availability of spaces. Nowhere do we have evidence that there's a very high demand for parking in these areas during those times. Uh, this would definitely be a different situation if it was, say, between noon and three o'clock during the day. But the idea is that there might only be a couple cars on that side of the street that would have to move to the other side of the street. And the other reason why we haven't looked at doing the other side of the street at this time is that there are residents who street park in front of their homes. And it, this would now all of a sudden perhaps prevent the ability for folks to have somewhere to park their car overnight if they have house guests or something like that. Uh, so what happened here was, and like I mentioned, there were folks that approached the, the city council and they, they asked the council to pass an ordinance that focused only on the west side of the street, not the east side of the street. And, and that's what the council did. Uh, so it's our understanding and based off what we see there, when we, we've been going by at around six in the morning. Uh, I don't have staff to go out there too. Uh, so I've had our code enforcement officers swing by in the morning at, at 6:00 AM and they've never seen a situation where there was ever a parking shortage.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question then. What I'm trying to avoid is what happened when the county got rid of the, all the RVs right by, um, the, uh, Mastro's Beach Club, whatever they call that thing. Right after you passed Topeka. And what happened was they all moved up to Malibu. They all moved to right above Tuna Beach. And then we had to go through a whole rigmarole because they couldn't go on the other side of the street. So they moved to Tuna Beach and then we had to change a lot there. Then they moved north. And so, so if there is not a demand for 50 cars, then, then if you make it a smaller area for less cars, you have less possibility of a mass movement at three, at two midnight into Malibu West.
John, point well taken. I want to see where we are in this issue and at the risk of not getting a second, I'm going to move that we adopt the plan staff's recommendation and put in the signage as proposed. Do I have a second? Okay, now you can propose your alternative to that.
Okay, I would, I would propose that the number of the linear feet of parking along the west side of the street is no more than 50% higher than the available parking on the east side of the street. And that way, if we get an overflow, we only have, we're talking five or 10 vans moving into Malibu West instead of 25 or 30. Just simple math. So if, if, if they identify that there's, you know, 20, 20-foot lots on the east side of the street, then it's 30 on the west side.
Sorry, Trevor.
Richard, is there someone here, uh, from the city that's, that's representing seeing this project? Cause, um, you know, this is changing the, the, the project here. Uh, maybe, um, I believe Commissioner Maza is saying that he can't make the findings as proposed, that we need to reduce the amount of, uh, of, of the area where the parking is restricted. And we would need to designate which area that would be. Is there someone here, um, representing the city that can speak about, about that?
I, I think I, at this point in time, I'll see if I can get ahold of our public works director, but uh, I think I'm your, your representative.
But you can't, you, you can't be the representative, uh, Richard, because you are advising the, the planning commission here. It needs to be uh, someone from the city that's putting forward the project.
Yeah, well, Trevor, I'd like to point out that I'm not setting a specific number. I'm giving a 50% bonus to the west side and staff can determine how much parking is on the east side. They don't have to do that tonight.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to avoid a disaster because, uh, Malibu West is private. Okay. And I don't know if the city can go in there and make rules like this in, in, in Malibu West. And they're the ones that's going to suffer.
Okay, Craig.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I've got a number of things, but in direct response to John's thing, um, I, I don't know that this is, uh, this is, this is, feels too hypothetical to me because somebody in motorhome is going to show up. They're going to see a sign that says, oh, I can't park here in the middle of the night. And they're going to move on. It's not, it's not like they're going to park there till midnight and then decide, oh, I need to leave now. They're just not going to park there in the first place.
Our, our RVs can't park there anyway because of the city's, uh, oversized vehicle ordinance.
Okay. But let me, Craig, let me point out this. People aren't stupid, okay? Richard mentioned that, oh gee, the, the owners like to park in front of their house. Well, if you're going to park there, park on the east side. Then where are the owners going to park? They're going to move at three o'clock in the morning.
I'm sorry. Excuse me one second. Trevor, I'm now thoroughly confused. I thought we cannot sort of piecemeal amend this proposal, but that's what we're doing. So what, what is it exactly we have the authority to do and not do?
That you have a project before you. So the question is whether you can make the findings or if you can't. And then, uh, if you can't, if there are conditions to be attached to the project, um, you know, they would allow you to make the findings. So that, that's what's before you, you here tonight.
Well, then, John, you or Craig?
That's what my proposal is. I can't make the finding that you can put 50 cars on one side of the road and 20 on the other, and it doesn't affect parking. That's what it says. The finding number one. So I'm saying, okay, well, put some conditions on it that makes it possible to make finding number one. That's all I'm trying to do.
Craig, you are in agreement with that.
Uh, no, I, I, it make, doesn't make sense to me. I, I have some other thoughts though I wanted, want to add. So I don't know, maybe, maybe I'll understand it better, but my, my, okay, just broadly, just as a preamble, my concerns are about how this affects the residents and how, whether we can tick the boxes for coastal. That, that's what all the, why some of these questions might seem picky, but um, i- if, if view blockage is a primary concern, which is what the staff report says, why would we not just post signs that say no vehicles over six feet height allowed or, or, you know, something along those lines? I mean, it's sort of a, a sort of a hypothetical question, but if that's, if that's the concern that's been specified, why wouldn't we just limit vehicle height?
Well, I'd, I'd like to.
Well, let somebody answer that for.
Yeah.
But vehicle heights already addressed through the oversized.
Right.
Oversized vehicle ordinance.
Right.
And.
Yeah, that would be a different, um, ordinance. I mean, I think the, 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 the finding here for, on visual is that, you know, just regular sized vehicles as they are already have some visual impacts. But I mean, the, the, the bigger emphasis here, I mean, this is the middle of the night, so there's not a lot of view issues. It's, it's a safety issue, you know, and an access issue.
And to, to follow up Richard's point about, and sort of flesh it out a little bit about the nearby public resources. Um, the beach closes at sunset. So the staff report says there's low demand for the beach at night. I would say there's legally, there's zero demand. And I would have a question though about trails. Um, can we clarify, are there any overnight camping options? Like can backpackers go there? And, and my, I, I think the answer is no. Right? There's no, no legal option to just park there and go hiking off into the Santa Monica Mountains for a week. Or is there?
Sure.
So Commissioner Hill, I don't disagree with the statements you're making about legal access. However, I have brought this issue up with the coastal commission, that LA County beaches, it's a old county ordinance. It's from probably the 40s. There is a county ordinance that establishes the hours of the beach. Uh, I've made that comment to the coastal commission numerous times. The coastal commission first said that that ordinance, um, is, is not right. It's not legal. And I explained, well, it's older than the coastal act. And with that, they still say that coastal access, uh, to the beach shall be maintained 24 hours a day. Um, I don't know why. My dad and I, when we go night diving in Malibu Pier, we're done by midnight at the latest. Usually it's 11 o'clock. Uh, but the, the point being is they, for whatever reason, want someone to be able to go to the beach at three o'clock.
And, and yet, and yet the, 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 the access stairways along Malibu routinely are locked at sunset, or they're supposed to be.
That's a dedication, but remember Craig, the city lost when they tried to do that at Surf Rider Beach. Okay, they lost. Coastal said, no, this is not a debatable question. They've decided.
Okay, so.
I, I just want to put it in perspective. I'm not worried about the public. I'm not worried about the coastal commission. I'm worried about the residents of west.
Yeah.
Okay. And if we, if we don't, if we can't, as far as I'm concerned, nobody in their right mind can make finding one because it's not true. So, um, if we want to protect, then we amend it. And, and Trevor said we can put in conditions that make number one findable. And, and then we hear on top of that, that no, no, we parks there anyway. Okay, so it's not a big onerous thing not to have 1,200 feet of parking. You make it whatever works.
Well, I'm not quite sure where we're going with this. Are you, the two of you sound like you, you don't, unless it can get fixed in ways that I'm not sure we're empowered to fix it, you want to just turn it down?
No, I want to, I'd like to make a motion that says, uh, that we can make a finding if we put the condition on the project that no more than the, the restricted parking can be no more than 150% of the east side parking. And that allows us to make a decision. And it allows staff to decide where and how much. Okay. But if we say, oh gee, we admit in open hearing and the staff tells us there's not enough parking on the other side of the street, then how can we make finding one?
Hey, so your request is that the, the applicant, um, that you continue the, the applicant can reduce the amount of, uh, no parking, uh, the parking restriction on the western side and come back with a, a smaller amount. That's what you're recommending.
My recommending, or, and I don't know. My recommending, or, and I don't know if we can do this, I think we've done it in the few, in the past. We say you can have a hundred and fifty, uh, you, you, you can be no more than three times or two, one and a half time, whatever it is, fifty percent more than is available across the street. And you figure out where it is in that twelve hundred feet. So let's staff do it. Why do we have to do it? Why do they have to come back?
Trevor, we have the Public Works Director available. Uh, Rob Devoe is here. Uh, we were looking for someone to answer those questions.
Please.
Answer what questions? I, I just logged in.
Okay, well, let me, let me explain what I was saying in the motion and.
And, and, and John, can you explain it to me? Because I don't understand the, I don't understand where you're going.
Okay, where I'm going is, staff has admitted that there is substantially less parking on the east side of the street available presently than there is on the west side of the street. Okay? And at midnight, and that's twelve hundred and fifty, twelve hundred, I think it was, I don't know what it is, fifty spaces on, on the west side of the street. I think your number was, wasn't it Richard, or was it sixty? And on the east side of the street, there's substantially less. So at midnight or one, or whenever they move, they need a place to go. You can't go uphill, you can't go downhill. So where do you go? You go to Malibu West. So the proposal was, we have to make a finding that we're not eliminating public parking. Richard stated that, gee, there isn't that much parking there anyway. So what I proposed was that on the west side of the street, Public Works determines uh, a X number of, determines the number of spaces on the east side that are available. And you have a hundred, you have a total of a, a hundred and fifty percent on the west side. So.
So if, so if on the east side, they figure out there's typically on average twenty spaces available that you would allow the west side to, to have, still have thirty spaces?
Yes, because if you're full, if, if the west side is full, ten cars will have no place to go. That's a lot different than fifty cars, of which, say thirty have no place to go. And the, the only place they have to go is Malibu West. They can't go to the shopping center because the shopping center is guarded.
My concern is that your plan would limit the areas that can be parking restricted for a few hours every night to no, it just wouldn't be an option then if we do the math.
No, if you had, let me explain it again. You've got forty spaces. Or you got, uh, say, say you got twenty spaces on the east side of the road that are legally parkable. Okay? They're wide enough and long enough to be a parking spot. That means you could have thirty spaces on the west side. And the offhand chance that the west side was full, then you would only have ten cars that only had no place to go. But if you start out with fifty and there's only twenty, you get thirty cars and they're going to go to Malibu West.
And so, so if a parking space is twenty feet long and say, Public Works figures out that the number is that, that you could have fifty spaces, then you'd go, uh, the, the whole length of it can be fifty times twenty feet. And so you'd get a thousand feet, you can go.
That has nothing to do with it.
John, you're saying that you can't have more than ten cars over the capacity of the east?
No, 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 I'm saying you take the capacity. It's simple math.
Apparently not.
Okay. You determine that there's twenty spaces, and I'm just using twenty as a number.
Yeah.
Okay, and nothing to do with ten or anything else. Twenty spaces on the east side of the road that would not get a ticket parking in. Okay? Legal spaces.
Yeah, yeah.
Then the west side of the road should be limited to thirty, because they all have to move.
Wait, stop, stop right there. Thirty what? Thirty spaces that are parking restricted at night?
Right. So if for the rare chance, which they're saying it's a rare chance, you're full, only ten cars don't have any place to park. But if you don't know where they can go to park on the east side, you can't make finding one.
Okay, so in your, in your example, then if Public Works figures, figures out, that plugs in the, the accurate numbers, not our hypotheticals, let's say that's a thirty spaces that you could have on the west side, a space is twenty feet long, then the, the resolution would say this can go six hundred feet up the road, but not further.
I'm saying that you take the, the spaces on the east side and you add fifty percent to that.
Yeah.
And you put it on the west side. Okay? That gives you a fifty percent bonus.
May, maybe we shouldn't, we should leave this hanging, mull it and, and let it stew and see about some, because I haven't raised my points yet.
Well, Trevor has something to say here, too.
I was just kind of say, um, may, maybe, uh, Rob can weigh in about whether the, the city is willing to reduce the amount of area where there would be no, where parking would be restricted here, since that's the, I think, what, what Commissioner uh, Maza is looking at is there's some type of reduction of, uh, the area that'd be parking restricted. Is the city willing to accept that change, or do you want to up or down on the proposal?
Well, let me just think it's point clear. It's not the city, it's not my staff, it's not Richard. This is a recommendation that came from Public Safety to put this no parking in here. That's how I got started. So any modification you guys want to do in here, I want to bring it up to Public Safety because they're the ones that brought this item up and, and moving it forward and so.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah, sure.
Public Safety is not a decision-making body.
Their recommendation body.
Recommendation only. So they're recommending to us, right?
Hmm, no.
No, they're not recommending to us?
They're recommending to, to City Council. They're appointed by City Council and they're recommending to them.
But we're going to pass something and City Council can change it. There's no reason to go back to Public Safety. But that's not my problem. We've always been told we can't talk to Public Safety, so I don't know what the deal is, but.
So it, it's real, it's, 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 it's real simple. If you guys have issues or, or comments on it, then if you're going to modify it, I, I, I mean, I would tend to want to make those suggestions over to Public Safety because they're the ones that kind of started this and see if they're okay with that. I, I mean, I, I mean, either way, I can be the mediator between the both of you, both the commissions to make sure issues that you have, bring it up and, and bring it up to them and then, you know, and both of you guys, both bodies can decide on what.
I would like, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this item to the Public Safety Commission to consider the
Trevor.
Situation that would force cars into Malibu West and the fact that there are less cars on the west side than the east side.
But we, we can't.
Something else that people want to bring up.
We can't refer items to the Public Safety Commission. That's an advisory body to the City Council, not to the, the Planning Commission. So the, the question is, what, if you can't make the findings on the project as is proposed here, you can, you can either vote it down or you can ask if Rob wants to, you know, take the project back and get direction from the council or from the Public Safety Commission or somebody else a, a, about it.
Okay, well, Rob, do you understand the problem I perceive and, and apparently we have a problem with? And that is that we have no place for these cars to go if we overburden the west side versus the east side. And so we need to somehow resolve that, so we don't do like, remember Tuna Beach, or not Tuna Beach, uh, south of Trank, uh, Changa, and they all moved to Tuna. Okay? We're trying to avoid that. So move across the street instead of into Malibu West.
Oh, so you're trying to prevent them not going into Malibu West?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Got it.
Just adequate parking is all.
Yeah, or, or, or just make sure whatever ordinance or whatever restriction that we're doing, it, it doesn't push them out into Malibu Park.
Has, has this issue been looked at by planning? I mean, has, has this been, issue been studied about whether there would be, I thought there, the, the, I thought the staff report said there was not going to be an impact about cars moving because there are barely any cars parked at the time of the night where there would be the restriction.
It does say that.
It does say that, but then this is moot. But there can be. We are approving fifty cars.
Okay, well, I, why don't we then formally deputize Rob to sort of.
Why don't we see what, what Commissioner Hill has to say, is it, maybe?
Yeah, I've got, I've got some other points that may, may color how we want to proceed in terms of process. First is, as a general concept, I'm really uncomfortable that there's no evidence in here about things like view blockage or history of nighttime accidents or the whole rationale for this. We haven't got any reports of like, why or so. But jumping past that, um, I think the, the hours of twelve to three are incre, they're, they're wrong. And I'm not sure what the right answer is, but it's probably either uh, to make it at least two AM to four AM because you may have people who live on that street who have guests who come over and they hang out late, they watch a movie, or they watch Saturday Night Live on the weekend and they, they don't leave the house till after one AM. So I think you want to make that parking available to parties and guests and whatever for anybody on that street beyond midnight. So, you know, I think two to four would make sense in that, uh, sense. And then and similarly, does it make any sense to coordinate that timing with whatever is happening on the highway? And I, I'm not sure, I don't remember the exact numbers on the highway, but you've got the no parking zone there that's either, I think it might be two to four, but if, if there's any opportunity that somebody would be going out and giving tickets or enforcing this at night, you'd want to put it in the same time slot so they could just be up at that end of town dealing with it all, all at once and not having to come up here at midnight and deal with something and then go, go do something and come back at two AM to deal with the highway. So that, the timing of that should be coordinated on the enforcement side. But in any, in any case, I think it should be after two AM. It, it, I don't understand the rationale for making it so early.
Sure, I'd be glad to address both of those. So, um, so working backwards, on the coordinated aspect, uh, staff did look at that, however, that was not the direction of the council. Uh, when this item was, uh, sponsored and, and staff took the ordinance to the council, um, those, the hours that you see in this ordinance as they are today were the hours that were specifically chosen. Uh, so once again, we, we did bring that issue up and the council elected to stick with these specific hours for this area. As far as, um, the commission's purview on hours, if the, the opportunity to change the hours was at the time of the ordinance, because what's before us tonight is, is just to install the signage. Um, to change hours of when the ordinance is effective, uh, is something that the, that is, it's, it's an ordinance, it's handled by the council. In the case of this, because it's chapter ten, it's not an ordinance that came before the Planning Commission, only ordinances that affect chapter seventeen come before the Planning Commission for a recommendation. So in order to change those hours, we would need the council to change the ordinance. So, uh, the commission has the purview to um, do things that are less hours.
Could, could we send it to council with an approval with a list of recommendations for them to consider?
This is not a recommendation. That ordinance, you guys already had the ordinance in front of you and that went to the council. So what's before you isn't just the application for the, the coastal development permit itself. And so question is whether installing that sign, you can make the findings under the Coastal Act, that, um, those signs can be installed.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'd like to send it back to Rob, so we can do that.
Yeah.
If, if you do send it back, then, you know, um, it does open up an opportunity for more comment. We did talk about the appealability issue before.
Let, let me, let me keep moving here. There, there's, um, we could, speaking towards how big the sign needs to be, we could make smaller signs if we did not include the extra language to the effect that parking is available on the other side of the street, which I, I, I know no universe where it's confusing where the, the parking signs apply to the side of the street that the sign is posted on. I don't think you need to tell anybody, oh, you can't park here, but you can go across the street. That, I don't think that needs to be on the sign. And we, the sign could be half the size if it didn't include that language. So, uh, that, what, what's the argument against that?
We're having a third, uh, we're having a, a third of the signs they told us they were going to have.
So once again, the, the main reason why that language is on there is that language was specifically done to address the, the concerns of the Coastal Commission, uh, that we are making public parking available and letting people know where there's an opportunity. That's strict, that's, that's the intent, and that's why that was added.
But, you know, you show up there and you go, oh damn, there's, I can't park here after midnight. Oh, but hey, there's no signs on the other side of the street. I'm good. That, I mean, that's how, that's how the world works.
Why are you turning around there?
Well, you can go up to Tappy and turn around, whatever, but, um, I, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't see that that's, it's just visual clutter to be putting up signage that is stating the obvious. And in terms of the view impacts, technically, I don't think we can make the finding that it's the least damaging alternative because they're in the view and we could make the signs smaller. We could also put them on lower, more rustic posts. If you had a post that was four or five feet high, I mean, you're going to use the existing poles, I get that, but, um, when you go to a state park, sometimes there are parking areas and you've got little signage at, at four foot height, or I've parked in Santa Monica where there are all the no parking and the hours of parking are actually posted on uh, parking meters. So they're like three feet off the ground, not even, not even car hood height. So it seems to me you could put these on rustic four by four pressure-treated posts, maybe four or five feet high, and they wouldn't block as much of you. And, you know, just be a little less obtrusive and, and less environmentally damaging that way.
What about the car?
What about what car?
Can we park there?
Cars will park there and, and block that sign.
Well, I'm saying, put it, put it, you know, above, above hood height, so, you know, you can, you can still see it past the car.
That's going to be at least six, six, uh, over six feet.
Aren't there requirements about the height for these signs also, Rob?
There's a MUTCD kind of, uh, a regulation on sign height to make them legal and everything, because a car will park there, a bigger car will park there, it'll be blocked, and that's why there's, the, uh, regulations say what, how high the sign needs to be. So it, it has to be that sign to be legal and enforceable from the sheriffs.
Why is it that there is a sign in Santa Monica all over the place that's, that's on a parking meter that says no parking after six PM?
They have their own cops.
That sign goes on each parking meter, though, right, Rob? Would that, because I, I think what Commissioner Hill's getting at is, you know, the parking meter stands about chest height and there's usually a a sign about the parking meter, but I, from what I recall, I think there's a sign almost on every meter.
Yeah, yeah, true, true. So, so if you had lower signs, you'd need more of them. Okay, I get it. Um, the, and this is a small point, but there's language in there that's, that says there'd be an exemption if the vehicle is owned by a government agency. I don't think it needs to be owned by the government. I think it just needs to be operated by or on behalf of the government. So that, like, if you had volunteers on patrol or arson watch or somebody out there, maybe they should be allowed to park there because they're functioning on behalf of government, but the car isn't owned by the government.
There it is.
No, no.
The cars are owned by the, uh.
Not arson watch, not arson watch.
I don't, I don't know arson watch's situation. Isn't that a statutory carve-out? Isn't that, uh, under the traffic code? Isn't that why those, those, uh, specific exceptions were put in there?
That's correct. I'm double checking that now, um.
And government, the government, government vehicles have government plates. They got a special little gizmo on them.
So you can verify, right?
Uh, because you can't say, gee, I, I, I shouldn't have gotten a ticket because I was on arson watch, but the, the cop can't tell that you were on arson.
Don't, don't they have little placards or something they put on their dash?
Craig, you got to train the sheriff and he doesn't want to be trained.
Trevor, I'm very, I mean, we're getting into the, you know, what we want to see written on the signs. I, I, I just am unclear whether we have the legal authority to do anything we're talking about.
Well, we're trying to get, I think, to, to whether, you know, we, on, on balance, this makes sense enough to say, yeah, sure, go ahead. And to me, I'm.
I thought we were authorizing Rob to go back and give the essence of what we're trying to convey, not the specific individual letters on the sign.
Yeah, I'd like to just move it on to Rob. He, he knows all these rules, assigned rules and all this kind of stuff. Uh, the real problem I'd like him to try to solve with Public Safety, and they may never have considered it, is where they go.
Okay, we got that. We don't have to raise that again. We got it.
Yeah, so, so can't we just pass it on and go home?
And I, I'm hung up on the, the midnight when I feel like it should. And I I'm hung up on the the midnight when I feel like it should be two AM.
Okay, but we're we're delegating someone to go back and express some concerns to see what they come back with.
Well, right, as long as that's on the list of things that will actually be addressed.
That that the ordinance can't be changed unless, you know, there's a new ordinance that comes through. So that the hours can't be changed. They can only be reduced. So those hours are set by the ordinance.
If they can be reduced, then at least we could instead of twelve to three, we could say one to three.
Yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, but Craig, let's let Rob do this. We're not gonna decide the hours tonight.
That's what I'm saying. I think we should give the sense of what it is that our concerns are, have him go back and then come back.
I mean, I I mean, my opinion, I I mean, I I mean, I can, but I'm just my opinion. I I don't know if the Public Safety. Uh, um, Commission is gonna want to change um. Anything.
Okay, well.
But that's just, that's just my thought.
Reality is, there are two votes here to turn this down. And that if that's where we're gonna go, then let's do it. I mean, we've we've expressed a lot of concerns that aren't addressed. And if you're not satisfied with where this is going, vote no.
I I don't want to turn it down. I'm really uncomfortable with the thought that we just can't condition it enough to the, you know, just saying. For example, two to four AM is is a condition rather than twelve to three. If if we can't even say that.
So Craig, you can definitely, if you want to say uh one to three rather than twelve to three, that's allowed. You can't change the ordinance. And you know, you can't direct the council to go change the ordinance. If the council wants to change what the ordinance was. It can. You had a chance to to weigh in on the ordinance before. I mean, that came back.
I I personally didn't. It didn't come to me.
Had a chance to to weigh in.
Point, then you could implement John's point too, where he's saying, yeah, sure, pass the ordinance, but restrict the number of parking spaces. Make it more restrictive, then then you're saying John's point is fine to do too.
That's where I'm, I mean, you're losing me. I mean, can we change what this ordinance is or not? I mean, you're saying we can change the hours. Can we change the number of cars that can be parked at any given time?
As long as it's less. I I don't, it's just, it seems arbitrary.
Well, I think we could work that out if Robert would come back with a report on it. I think that city councils can change things. I think that the 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 uh supervisors of. Of the county realized they made a big mistake at Tuna Beach, but they screwed us. So it didn't matter. If they had owned Tuna Beach, they would have changed it. So.
Okay, but I I I I'm trying to ask, I guess, a specific question. Trevor, what is the limit of what we can do here? Or not do? Do we have the authority to change the number of cars that are being parked on one side or the other?
So this is the the situation here is the same as at any type of, you know, project applicant, but the city is the applicant at this point. So it it's it's in Rob's, you know, position right here. You know, he's been given direction to bring by the City Council to bring this project forward. So if within that discretion, he has the ability to, you know, propose a smaller project, you know, then, you know, so be it. But the question here is whether, you know, it's it's not for the planning commission to design what the best project is. What it is is this proposed project, whether you can make the findings for the coastal development permit to approve that project as proposed. You know, this project's been vetted, you know, it's already been up and down through the ordinance, through the planning, Public Safety Planning Commission and City Council was brought back here. To get the signs put in. And now if if you don't think that those uh the findings can be made to put those signs in. You know, you can make adjustments to that. If if it's a condition, the condition, like I said. You know, while the ordinance would allow it to be the the parking restricted between noon and sorry, between twelve and three AM. Um, if you said, you said, well, actually, only, you know, one hour would be appropriate in order to eliminate the the coastal act findings. Then, you know, so be it. Then you can, you could, you know, condition, you know, by limiting that. Uh, in terms of changing the nature of the project, you know, that's that that's not for the commission to. It's never the the the. The purview of the commission to, you know, redesign somebody's project. Um, but it it's to give them opportunity if the if the, you know, applicant wants an opportunity to. Um, to continue the item so that it can make changes to the project, you can offer that to the applicant and that's what you would be doing here. And then I think the concerns that have been raised, you want to, you know, if that was the case, that the applicant does want the continuance. Just to, you know, state what items, you know, um, what findings you're not able to be. The other option here is. You know, um, is is to continue the item just for, you know, to the next meeting or the meeting after because. Well, I I guess that's not gonna make a big difference. Well, it potentially you would have. Be able to to weigh in.
But Trevor, I I I still don't understand the fundamental line that you're drawing. We have the authority to change the hours, but do we or don't we or don't we have the authority to change the number of cars? I I just.
So I don't understand this number of cars idea. I understand it to be is that you're trying to change the area that's restricted. So there's an area designated where these signs are going to be installed. And I believe Commissioner Maza is trying to say that. Uh, instead of uh that entire area being restricted, you could only make the findings if a lesser area, if a smaller area. Had the restricted parking. And um I can't, I I was trying to follow exactly uh how much it had to be reduced. He was trying to provide some discretion to um to the to, you know, how much that, you know, what what area that would be. You know, but if you're trying to change, you know, the area where it's it's going to apply and they want to apply for the whole area. Then, you know, that's that's the project. So the question is whether the the applicant wants to continue it to consider reducing the scope of the project. Rather than.
Trevor, Trevor, that was clear as mud. Can I make a motion? To have a fifty percent bonus on the west side of the street versus the legal parking on the east side of the street. And reduce the hours to whatever Craig said, two to four. Can I make that motion?
You you can reduce the hours uh to to say that you would approve it with the hours between one and three in the morning. I think that would be the.
Or 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 it it could say two and three.
Okay, two and three, okay, and. Maximum, you can have the same twelve hundred feet, the maximum cars that have to move. Can be no more than fifty percent higher than the maximum spaces on the other side of the street. That's my motion. Okay, I'm not changing the the dimensions of the project. Uh, I'm changing the hours. And we can vote on it and just do it and Rob can decide where the no parking signs go.
I I would, I would go with that if I could also add. That they don't have the signage there that says, oh, by the way, there's parking on the other side of the street. Because I understand.
Craig, Craig, why are you insisting on this? You're opening that this is a public work.
Because the signs could be half the size.
Because.
The need for those signs is in the case where, for example. You can't park here. You need to go to this parking lot that's down the street and it's somewhere else. And that's to inform them where you go. Here, you don't need to inform them. They can just see it's across the street.
As far as I'm concerned, this is a public work. Is it a public work, Rob?
Is what?
Is this project a public work?
John, let let's try to.
No, no, I'm trying to focus it down because if we do something that the Coastal Commission does not allow. This is appealable. It's a public work.
John, what I'm trying to say is you've got two people on the same side here. If Craig is not gonna support your motion, if you don't reduce the sign. He hasn't said that, but if he's not going to, then we're not gonna go anywhere. So are you.
I'm trying to explain to Craig that you put in something the Coastal Commission won't approve.
Okay, he hears you.
Okay, I do you hear me, Craig? Without that.
I don't, I don't believe they wouldn't approve it.
Okay, so we now have everyone's position staked out. He needs the sign reduced or he's not gonna support what you're proposing. You either can accept that or you're not.
You're not gonna second it without that, Craig. Is that correct?
But but the point is, we're proposing something that's gonna be reheard through the public works.
That has nothing to do with us, okay?
This is what's in front of us right.
Are you going to second the motion if I do not change the sign?
I want to keep the sign smaller.
Okay, I will take Craig's amendment. Will you second it now, Craig?
I'll second it now.
Okay, Trevor, do you know what's going on here? We have three aspects that are being changed.
I I understand two of the aspects. So the motion is staff's recommendation with uh with but with the hours reduced. Um, so that there'd be no parking lot between two AM and three AM. And then that the language on the signs that would explain that there is uh parking available. On the opposite side of the road would be removed from the signs. And then I'd not understand the bonus.
Okay, well, I'll 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 explain it and because it's part of the motion. Rob, the Public Works Department determines where the no parking suns signs go. They may are are street switching or whatever you want to call them. They, those are limited to. Fifty percent more than the available parking spaces on the east side of the street. It could not be plainer than that.
But there's no parking spaces there, so.
Yes, there are. Staff, it's said, there are parking spaces there.
Rob, go ahead.
So, John, let me get this right. And and I want to play with numbers and just to make sure that I got it right. I think I got it right. Let's say there's a hundred parking spots on the east side. The parking restrictions can't be more than fifty per fifty parking spots on the west side.
No, a hundred and fifty.
Oh, so, oh, 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 so you're saying, okay, so there's a hundred on the east side.
Hundred fifty on the west side.
So it'll be a hundred and fifty on the, okay, got it.
It's a bonus. It's just to have an overflow and only have a problem when we have a. A pleasure fair or something. I don't know what it would happen up there. We'd get a hundred and fifty people, but whatever.
So and and let me make sure that we got our north and south and east and west. The east is Malibu Park side, west is, okay. I I I was thinking the opposite of what you were saying.
No, 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 I'm just trying to avoid a mass exodus.
Okay, so we have John's motion, we have Craig's second there, right?
Hold on, I I I we need to explain this language because you're gonna add a condition to the project that states. That um the restricted area where the the signs are posted. What is it? Shall not exceed. Rob, what 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 will be the the best way to sort of phrase this?
Fifty fifty percent more than the available spaces on the east side. It cannot be clearer.
The only thing that's unclear there is you don't, you haven't defined what's available because you don't know what the current parking load is.
To be determined by the planning director. Works director. And 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 those spaces are off the, out of the, out of the motion. Those spaces are where you can park legally and you you can't get a ticket. Those are the parking spaces.
So I I I think the parking restrictions cannot exceed a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty percent of the available parking on the east side.
Correct, that's my motion.
Okay, so it could be add a condition that says the. The restricted area, the area. The area where the the parking or parking is restricted. Um, the number of spots that are affected shall not. Uh, exceed a hundred for fifty percent of the parking. Parking spots available on the east side of uh Trancais County Road, Road, right? Is that, does that reflect?
Yes, and and availability as defined or determined by the who whomever, somebody.
They have to be legal and and and. I would, I would just say to be determined, to be determined by the planning director. I would put that, I mean.
As 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 uh as determined by the planning director at the end of that sentence.
Public Works Director.
Shaking his head strongly there.
As determined by Patricia Alizar.
I think we should say the planning director, um, since Rob is here as the applicant, it would be odd to have the applicant.
And and with a planning director in consultation with.
Oh, boy. Uh, Richard can, Richard's getting, we'll we'll use the process at the city to determine what that is, but I would say.
That's the motion. We don't have to have the. Okay.
Patricia, let's have a vote.
One moment. So the maker was Commissioner Maza, seconder Commissioner Hill, correct? One moment.
And Vice Chair Wile is an innocent bystander to all of this.
Let me call the role Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile.
Not a chance.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay.
What 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 would you have preferred?
It's too late. It already paid, already passed.
I'm just, I'm curious. I'll I'll have to call you up, I guess.
I I don't, I I don't buy the argument that just because there are different number of spaces, everyone who's not parking there is gonna flood into. Uh, Malibu West, you know, they're gonna go all over the place. And I predicated our. Actions by trying to guess where people are gonna move their cars, to me, isn't the way to go.
To me, it's pretty, I move adjourned in the uh honor of Richard Kerrigan, prior planning commissioner.
I second that.
Roll call.
One moment. Sorry about that. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes, and thank you all.
Aloha.
Thank you, David. Happy trails.
Good night.